This August the 20th, school board meeting to order. First off, I'd like to recognize one of our new SROs, Mr. Brad Johnson, who's stationed at Pinata. And it's now my pleasure to recognize Mr. Danny Collins from Duke Energy. And Ms. Dr. Pickles would like probably give an introduction there.
Ms. Paula and Bridget, if you'll come forward. I'll let Mr. Danny tell us why he's here this evening.
Yes, so I'm pleased to be able to come back. This is the third grant Duke Energy Foundation has been able to provide to Madison County School System. We work through Career Source North Florida. We have a standing policy because we serve much of Orlando and St. Pete areas. We typically don't give money directly to schools. We work through a nonprofit organization within the community. In this case, Career Source North Florida stepped up and said, "This is a workforce development program. We'd like to be involved with it." So tonight, I'm bringing you another check for $20,000 for the Energy and Power Program.
Thank you.
To give you a little idea why we value it so highly, obviously, Energy and Power, that's kind of what we do. But I've had the opportunity to go in the classroom several times. I've got to learn a lot about the program. And Mr. Sam Stollnecker and Mr. Jones were the ones that originally came to me and said, "Hey, you've got this program, we'd like to go over and look at it, see if you can support it." And I'm glad they did because it continues to be a very successful program. We've had multiple field trips to our solar facilities in Harry and Swanee to date. The only children, school kids, that have gone to visit those sites up here are the kids from this program. And when they're out there, we have our experts in solar production that are answering questions that are way over my head. And that's just a testament to what these kids are learning and how performing they are. Use some of your best in your right, and I'm just proud to be here to give y'all somebody to continue to keep that going. So I'll let Bridget talk a little bit about what the program is. I've seen it, but I can't explain it as well as I can.
Well, as you know, last year was my first year teaching at the program from Andrea. So I'm in the process of learning as well and thoroughly enjoying it. But the good thing about this program is that you get to practice skills that you're learning in high school, like mathematics, so that it actually means something. So that the kids are actually getting to see how it's applied. It's a hands-on program, it's project-based, and so they are assigned projects to work on that range anywhere from building a transformer to designing a mini hydroelectric plant. We're just about in course four to start working on a mini steam turbine. And so you're using all different facets of power, and they're getting to see all of those throughout the course. And I've noticed that at the end of the year, we were doing our, last year, we made our review to get ready for there's an end of the project, or end of course test for it. And they remembered so much more than what they do just in a classroom, like the mathematics classroom. They're always doing this math, math, math. So it was really, to me, very encouraging to see that these kids are keeping what they're learning and they're building as they go. I interviewed both Danny and some of the people from Tri-County who were saying that the majority of their workforce is retired from the H M. And so they were looking for these new kids, the kids to come out and take those places. And the least salaries for these people are wonderful. So we're trying to get more kids involved and to keep them involved and encourage them to stay with the program because I really, really think it's giving them potential for it.
Mrs. Schoes, let me ask you one question. How are these funds spent? Are they to buy our fund supplies and materials for these children so that they can advance their skills? And that's, I just wanted to hear that, yes. So such a good program to supply all those supplies that our children need.
And thank you, you, Superintendent Superintendent Pickles, for having this program. I can't tell you how unique it is. I've not seen anything like it. And in fact, when I talk to, and I cover 16 counties in North Florida, I talk to a lot of different schools, school boards, and I tell them, "Y'all come over and see what Madison's doing. This is a unique program. It is something that we don't see everywhere else. And we're happy to provide the funds for it. And like she said, you know, we're going to be hiring some of these folks at some point in the future when they're ready to become workforce. But if they're not, they're going to go become engineers, architects, we're going to be highly skilled folks in whatever they do. So again, thank you all for what you're doing, and we're just happy to be a part of it.
And thank you for your support.
Thank you.
And I got a big old picture. The board of the mayor. Okay, on three. Two, one, two, three. Come on, one, two, three.
I appreciate it. Okay, again, a big thanks to Duke Energy. We have a presentation from the Madison Athletic Boosters Club, Mr. Justin Burt.
Good evening. Thank you for your time this evening. Some of y'all probably know why I'm here. I've been, Ms. Karen Pickles has talked quite a bit about what the Booster Club wants to do as far as the facilities, as far as the complexes, better known as Boot Hill, making things better. So I'm going to kind of tell you what the plan of the Booster Club is doing. I'm asking, you know, I'm asking for your support. Y'all hopefully will back us in this time of need, I guess you could say, type thing. So first, I'd like to thank you for the evening, for your evening to hear my plan, to hear the plan of the Booster Club. Because it seems like some people are not liking what they're hearing in the community, the Booster Club's plan. Last year, I came and spoke to the board about doing different things amongst the buildings down there. Things that need to be done. Y'all stepped up, you started doing some things. Heard, you know, y'all were wanting to put a cupboard area for the cooking area. I was able to get that donated by Elite Buildings. He has a site, I believe in front of Truck Supply in about Austin, but he also has, he sells the buildings up for an uphold fee. He came up, said, "I'll give you a building as long as you put me up the sign." So I said, "We can handle that." City Electric in Tallahassee donated light fixtures for us, they had LED light fixtures, me and my son, who's an ex-Madison County graduate, installed and run the conduit, pulled the wire. Talking about kids using their hands and learning stuff. He's one of, his senior year, he was in that program on this crew. He was one of the first ones that he liked in class. Now he's into doing controls and stuff on air conditions and stuff at F S U, the Capitol, and things like that. So in saying that, y'all put on doors, put on, put a washing machine and dryer in the Fieldhouse Coach Co. It's excited. He's excited when he's seeing the sidewalks are a blessing to many. A lot of people used to complain about that, you know. So it's, we're moving in the right direction. Kenny Hall built some cabinets for the concession stand to replace what was a plywood-style cabinet, wasn't sealed. He made us some new countertops we were able to install, you know, starting there. So in doing that, in the goal of our Booster Club, we want to help. We want to help, we want to do, we want to do. People are tired of going to other places, seeing things that are, you know, that are better. And I understand, y'all can't do it all by yourself. Y'all moving in the right direction, I understand. Ms. Karen, Dr. Pickles has entertained some ideas of doing some remodeling. I don't know the whole hins and outs because that's the district doing it, that's not mine. My, or our doing, that's the Booster Club, I must keep saying mine. But as a Booster Club, we wanted to take on a project. So the first project we looked at was rebuilding the weight room. The building doesn't need to be repaired. Building doesn't need to be torn down, it just needs some love and care. The building's done its job for 20-plus years, or 14-plus years, however long it's been. So we want to, it has no air, it has an air condition that's made to go in a house. The two units on the walls were bad. So our thought was, let's start with air condition. Let's put air condition in it, get the conditioned air right, get it exhausted right, get fresh air into it. And then we look at painting, putting a new floor down, and move it on, on from there. Coach Co's game, anything we can do to make it better. So we came up with a strategy, a lot of high schools in the area. My dad retired from a high school that charges, they charge for parking the football games. People think, "Man, that's crazy, at a high school game?" Yeah, it's crazy, but that's how the schools make money. That's how Danella makes money. That's how they do things in their program to get extra money. So in our voting and talking, we talked about three meetings. Some of the members are here, they'll stand up. This is not a Justin Burt decision. This is a decision of the Booster Club. We talked about it, we're going to charge for parking. We're going to use that money to help, help facilities with these kids, make it better for these kids and coaches. We're state championship, let's make it state championship. I understand we can't make the doors out of gold, we can't make the floors out of diamonds. But I feel that we can give them the best we can absolutely, we can absolutely give them. The buildings have been worn, don't, no doubt, they've been worn, they've been tough. They're football, they're football kids, they're track kids, they're softball kids, they're baseball kids, they use these buildings. Basketball kids, they're kids, they wear the buildings out. So in our setting, we wanted to raise funds to start with the Booster Club. I've had a lot of people questioning why we're doing it. Where's the money going to go? Like I told the board, when we get the money, I want to do it. If we set aside, we need $10,000 to put air conditioning in the weight room and have it done right, when $10,000 is in the bank, we're going to, we're going to do the work. We're not going to sell the money. I want the community seeing the changes we're making. I've talked to Mr. Rick about it, we do something, I won't even doubt it, let's put it in newspapers. Let's show the community what their money's going for. We're not sitting on it, banking and banking interest off of it. So we've looked at, looked at the possibility of parking, trying to figure out how we're going to do it. There's few and far, but not too many of us that are involved in this. So the basketball coaches stepped up, the boys' basketball coach stepped up, so they would operate the gates in the roads. When you come in the gate, you're going to go both directions, there'll be two tables set up, booths, whatever you want to call them. And there would be a basketball coach with a couple of players. We're going to, we're going to pay them 200 bucks a night. So if we only have six home games, they're going to get 1,200 dollars to go towards their, towards their sport, to buy a uniform, pay for travel, whatever they want to do to help, help those guys out. They're the same kids that play football, the majority of them, just a few different coaches, a few different kids. So not only is football going to get out of it, the basketball's going to get out of it. The kids that use the weight room is going to get out of it. The track team that uses the Fieldhouse is going to get out of it. It's just not the 70 kids that snap on the helmets on Friday nights. Yes, they play multiple sports, so they're going to get multiple use out of the building. And they, most of them are on the weightlifting team. So that is our goal. I hope y'all back us in this. Like I said, I know a lot of people in the community have raised their, or me and Ms. Karen has talked more in the last two weeks than we've talked Friday, the whole time she's been, that I've lived in this county for 15, 15 years. We've been church to softball, and did different things together. So in saying that, I know the community's concerned. I know it wasn't going to be easy. But if I charge more at the ticket, they're going to complain about the ticket than they will, you know, for the parking. Members of the band and cheerleaders and stuff like that, they're going to have a pass to get in at all people's house. Why ain't they going to do that? Well, they're going to have a pass to get in because we're not going to charge them. They're coming to the game to be, they're just as much a football player, you know, as any other kid. So it's $5 a game, or six games, so it's 30 bucks. If you pay every time, but we're going to sell a pass, we go hang a pass in your rearview mirror, the little, I can't think what they call them, but the little decal thing you're going to hang in your thing? You pull up, you have it hanging, you're going to drive, you're going to drive one, we're going to sell those for 25. So you get, you get a one game, I guess savings out of the deal now. Playoffs come, then that would be a different thing. Because I'm not sure, depending on how we handle this year, we might host the first two rounds, or we might only get one round here. So we just went with the six home games that's on the schedule for right now, and then, and go from there. Both sides will pay home and visitors. As of tomorrow, I just got the sign, tomorrow, I'm going to hang the sign in front of the schools so people start seeing it. But there's going to be a $5 charge, so the community sees it, it's in there. Mr. Rick can then put it on Facebook, it's probably in the paper, I have not checked the paper yet. I know it made the Facebook thing that we're publishing. And I've already got phone calls, people are, people are game. All they want to know is where's the money going, what you doing with it? Facilities, making things better, you know, better for the kids. Like me and Ms. Karen talked, you know, if we get the weight room done, and we want to partner with y'all on another bigger project, hey, we'll put our money with it, let's, let's keep this thing moving, let's not stop. We get this done, let's move to a different building, or a different, different facility. If it's baseball, softball, whatever, we just want to keep moving forward and make our facilities the best. You know, as they are, I want to make them the state championship quality and bring it up to code. I mean, I know there is some, a few code violations, I'm sure, for the new codes from the, whenever that bill was built, '87, '83, you know, whatever it is. So that's our goal, it's the Booster Club wanting to do it. Every year, we can't make just enough money to pay the bills. I mean, it's just people, it's just not lining up to give. I was, I told y'all, I said next minute ago, I wish Duke Energy had another check in the back pocket, whip out for us, but...
They do ask.
Yeah. So we'll take anything, you know, we do sell signs, we do work concession stands and make money. You know, we, we sell Marshall Club seats. I counted last night, I think we sold, if you count them as a, as a family, we sold about 30 families worth of Marshall Club seats. Which ain't many, there's still plenty of room out there, you know, if people buy more, you know, do more. But understand, if people do what they can do, they may not make it every game, they may rain the two of the games that don't come to. But as a community, I'm asking for y'all to back us as the Booster Club. Any concerns, you can have people call me, my number's out in the public. I mean, if it's from Little League to the Booster Club, people can call me if they have any concern. I'll answer any questions y'all have. But that is our goal. We want to make stuff better for the kids, we want it, we want the kids to have the best. I know a lot of people says, "Well, it ain't, it ain't books and paper." Them kids need something else, five books, papers, and that, they burn a little energy off them. We're going to make it best for them. They work hard, keeping their grades up, to play another sport, to play an activity after school, as a band or whatever. They work hard to keep that. And I think we ought to give them the best we can give them with the community that we have. And I guess the old saying goes, "It takes a village to raise a kid." I'm asking for the village's help. Y'all have any questions?
I'd like to say something, too. First of all, I'd like to thank you for your volunteering efforts, and everyone else that volunteers. I realize you don't get paid, and it takes a lot of time and effort, and you know, I know you have the kids' heart, you know, front and center. I did a little research, and I'll, I'll tell you what, it bothers, and I understand what you're saying. We want the best, for sure. But, and I hope it's successful, you know, the parking fee. How much do you charge for the ticket to get into the game?
We don't get any money. It's $8. That goes to the high school cheer team and the school.
So you don't...
Even, and let me step one, let me say, even the Marshall Club we sell, if I sell you a Marshall Club for 160 bucks, I have, this year, I have to pay the school $42 out of that 160.
Okay.
Just for that seat. And if your husband buys a seat for 60 more dollars, I pay $42 to the school. So I'm only really making 18 bucks on your husband.
Right.
Or vice versa. And then time I buy it, the program, I'm making about $104 for a wife, for a two-person package deal.
Right. Well, like I said, I hope it's successful. I did look at Columbia, Taylor, Hamilton, Lounes, and Swanee to see what's going on. And I know that Columbia charges $2, and the FFA gets it. They're the ones that collect it. So they're, they're using it for their farm over there in Columbia County, which is their business, whatever they decide to do. And I just, I mean, I think I'm thinking of the people that are just getting by in Madison. And I mean, there's people that are just getting by. And this bothers me that they have to put out more money. Now, that's just me. I mean, you know, to some of us, to me, it wouldn't be a problem.
Right.
But there's a lot of people are in the situation where they've got, you know, the kids, they're paying for the kids to go. And like I say, I hope it's successful. I know why you're doing it, I respect what you're doing. It's just that it bothers me that they're going to have to shell out more money.
Oh, I feel, I understand. It was something we talked about for three meetings.
Yeah, I know.
Because it was a hard thing to come up with. It's really what we want to do, is, you know, you're going to hurt some people. And I understand, you know, I had, I had a lady tell me, "Well, I guess I'm going to park at the nursing home and walk." But I guarantee if I followed her to Walmart, she would circle the parking lot at Walmart and pick the front parking spot to get into Walmart.
Yeah.
And she's worried about it.
Right.
I'm sorry, you know what I'm saying?
Well, I just had to express that.
I understand, and I don't want, I want everybody to know.
We don't live in a town that's got a lot of money. You know, this is...
And speaking of Lounes, Lounes is 12 bucks to get into a game on Friday night.
Oh, okay, well, I was thinking that it was $8.
It's 12 bucks.
Okay.
I did that statement, when they remodeled that statement, I had to go to the first three games because I was the head electrician and sit on site, so if there was a problem, it was 12 dollars.
All I can say is, I hope you, it's successful, and maybe it will be.
Yeah, I hope it is, I hope it works out and the kids get the benefit of doing it, so...
Thank you. Thank you for presenting. I had not heard any of these details from anywhere except from the community. And they were calling, and they were concerned about the parking fee. And what you're doing is very well, good thing. And I'm, I'm with you on these things. But my concern is, now, when you receive so much money, and of course, for the health and safety of these children, when they go out there and they do that football stuff and basketball, baseball, some are asthmatic or whatever, and children die from not having enough ventilation and air and whatever. And if these children are going to play for us, cotton is king. In Madison County, football is king. So we've got to support these children. My concern is, when you got enough money, and there will be extra money.
Well, our game goes.
Uh-huh, what will you do with that extra money? Will you bring it back before the board and these major projects and whatever?
Well, when the weight room's done, for the, kind of what, I guess the four things we're looking at the weight room is the air condition, and then do painting, flooring, and lighting. Air condition is part of the exhaust system, control system, to get the right amount of air in the building, get air that's not humid in there for people that have asthma skin.
I'm understanding all that. I'm just saying about that extra money. Because if you, the community don't do it, well, is the school board supposed to do it?
Right, and that's what I want to do. I want there to be extra money.
So if you all can't do it, let the school board do it.
Right, and I want to be, I want there to be extra money. It's not going to happen this year, I don't think. You know, we've brainstormed, how many cars pull in on a Friday night? Just trying to think where our money's going to be at, and that's what I said kind of when I started. When we get the money to put air condition, I want the air condition in, and then we're working on the next phase. When the weight room's done, by the, before the weight room's done, I want the Booster Club to come up with our next step.
That's exactly, and you all will keep us informed.
Right, and if we can't...
And this is my next question.
If we can, before, to do the track by ourselves.
Let me ask another question.
I'll ask it, you don't tell.
You've answered, well. And when you, my trainer thought I'm old enough.
Sorry about that.
But anyway, and I was saying, the next project that you have, before you start on a major problem.
I'll be right here.
I mean, you would be right here, and then we can approve to go with it or not go with it.
Right.
And we will have, will we have a statement, a monthly statement? So that we, will you all better know how the money's...
It'll be in our Booster Club account, and then it will...
To some accountability of how the money's being spent.
That's what we had talked about, doing a, doing a, when we first talked about Booster Club.
I wholeheartedly agree with you. I'm just wanting to know about the finances and the next phase and stuff.
But we're not going to do a building fund, it's going to be in a parking, a parking line item. And Ms. Ruth Ann and Ms. Barnes will handle, put in the right line item, and then we're ready to spend it. Because we didn't want it to put in a building fund, and somebody say, "Why you got to redoing the track? That was a building fund."
But let me ask you another question, too. And you, I don't know, as you said, some of the names of the, who would be receiving from some of these funds, would band be receiving some of these funds?
Yeah, because they'll, they'll have, they'll be able to use weight rooms, they'll be able to use the facilities.
But I'm saying, like, with uniforms and, you know, like, they don't generate any money at all. The band people don't generate any money at all. And they're kind of suffering a little bit.
The band's not really in our, in the Booster Club, and they're not, we don't allocate money for them. Like, we allocate, when we get a sponsor, for instance, you give us $200, we split that amongst nine different things. 200 just don't dump in Booster Club and sit there, we have to pay, we have weightlifting, boys and girls, flag football, volleyball, all, all, the only one that we really...
Let me just ask you this, well, how do boys and girls get in there and the band can't get in there? Asking questions, wants to know, because some, everybody to get some of it.
People are going to want to know, you know. And it, and it could be next year, the band can say, "I can put some parents out at the gate, and basketball, I want to do it." And they'll have their, freely, whatever you want to call it. We have band members and cheerleaders, of course, of course, ballplayers, of course, are playing, you know, playing on the field. And then the students, we were just doing it, a lot of them come with their family, so I mean...
Or dropped off. Some are dropped off.
Or dropped off, you know what I'm saying? So the ones that are dropped off, we are going to kind of shorten that up, too. Mr. David Harper, we spoke with him at the police department, we're going to actually have them drop off in the school bus drop-off area. To keep all that riffraff where people are dumping out, backing over kids, up by the gates where people are lining up. When you get a busy night, and there's 80 or 90 people standing in the gate trying to get a ticket to, to get in. So we're actually working on that a little bit, about the drop. I know that ain't nothing to do with Booster Club, we just asked him to kind of help us so we don't get a kid ran over. At least they have a nice paved area, circle traffic, they can turn in, get out of there, even drop them off on that side, so...
And we will have this contract in writing.
For us?
Will we partner with you? I, I'm, I'm hearing what you're saying, but I read and understand better what I'm reading, whatever, and all that.
I don't know, we have a contract, and we're going, we're going to do the weight room, not unless you don't want to tell us. No, we'll just be...
No, I'm saying what you're proposing. Because, you know, we have to have something in writing.
I can put some, I mean, I have my letter.
The board has to have something in writing, what you're proposing, and, you know, the charge and all that stuff and whatever and all that. We have to have something in writing.
I can add it, and then email it to Ms. Karen or whatever.
You know, the plans, have the plans in writing, and your proposal, and all that stuff. And we can read over and get a better understanding.
I want to, I want to thank you for all your hard work and all the parents in the Booster Club, because it is a thankless job and a lot of hard work. The, the only, the only thing that I ask, and you've clarified it, is that all the monies go to the students or toward facilities.
That's, that's what all the money's going to, oh, excuse me, it's going to go to anything a student involved in. If it's the, if it's the ticket booth where a parent's standing at, I don't want to right now...
Those are the things that should be in the contract.
But if a parent, if it, if it, it helps a kid learn, or it helps a kid do something better for his job, or better for his sport, or breathe better, or...
Right.
You know, mildew in the hill.
No, no, the, the air in there needs to be replaced.
Yeah.
The humidity's so bad, I'm sure, right now with how hot it is, that you really probably can't even be in there, really. The other thing, and you clarified, again, I, I have, I have concerns, because this is a poor community that, like, a band member, cheerleader, or football player's parents maybe couldn't afford to come. But you've said they're going to get a pass, so theoretically, their family could use the pass to come in, and they could.
The only thing is, would hurt a family, kind of what I looked at, if you had a, a senior in the ninth grade that both could drive, and you bring it through cars, because they wanted to bring their own car, that's, that's going to hurt a family that doesn't ride together.
They may want to ride together that night.
Yeah, it's going to happen a few times. You know, it's going to happen a few times. So, and, and the other nice thing is, if you buy one, and you drive a van, all them can ride with you to the game. Meet one day's parking lot, ride together to the game. Use park, you know, use park tags, it's not signed to a vehicle, you know what I'm saying? It's signed to the person, because we need to do it stickers, like the public bird ring does. Well, you might want to drive one vehicle one night, and the other one, so we didn't have to sell two stickers and all that. So that's why we're going with the hanging thing, to give to them and move from one, you know, one vehicle to another. Or a group of people come to go, "Hey, let's ride together and I can do it again."
No, I, I, I mean, any type of improvements that can be made is a great thing. And I, I just would encourage the Booster Club to go ahead and have your plan, next plan, in case by the end of this season, you already have it.
That's what we're praying for.
I mean, you may get it before the season's out.
Yeah, we got some good games at home, that's going to bring some, bring some good crowds, I think. And that's what I said, I tried to score on...
I mean, I don't, I don't know that we've ever counted how many cars are in the, in the parking lot to see what it would generate. So, I mean, you may have the money before the season's out, where you could, like, start on something else.
The next thing. I told somebody tonight, if we'd have charged at the Dixie County game last year, we'd have probably tore that building down and put a new one up, there were so many people.
Are there any other questions?
I don't have any.
Thank you so much, and we appreciate all the Booster Club is doing.
Yes.
All right, thank y'all.
So, one more thing, Mr. Attorney, what are we going to need, you know, in order to vote on this and whatever? Because we got to vote on it, and we got to have something in writing.
I don't know that you're going to be able to have anything by this coming up game, you know, because we've got a game on Friday. I think you can make it as formal or as relaxed as you would like to. I think certainly, I think what Mr. Burt was saying was, they, he was going to do a letter outlining all this. And I think, of course, in that letter, it needs to say what you're going to charge, that the money will be counted for separately, what you're going to use the money for.
And that's, we talked about, like you've said, that's one reason we didn't put on the ticket, because we'd have more of a headache for us pulling the ticket money out, our money out, and stuff.
I, I do think it's probably appropriate for the board to vote on it, because, of course, the Booster Club doesn't own the parking places.
That's right.
It's the board's facility. So I, I think if y'all want to, if y'all want to support this and allow it, then y'all need, probably need to amend the agenda and make a motion second, and vote.
So, I mean, we can see how that goes. We can do it for one year and see how it works.
Right.
And I move that we give this to the Booster Club to try for one year, one year only. And if, however it worked, well, or bad, or whatever, we can bring it back to us, and we can vote again. And um, if hi- if however it worked, well, uh, bad or whatever, we can bring it back to us and we can vote again. That's my motion. I move that we do prove it.
Of course, Madam Chair, you need to amend the.
Yes, we need to amend the agenda first before you make your motion. It's taken. Um, and that is next to amend the agenda for some other things, but we'll go ahead and amend the agenda to add, to vote on the um, booster club proposal. Um, is there a motion?
Motion was made by Ms. Hagan.
Okay, motion made by Ms. Hagan. And is there a second?
I second the motion.
Okay. All those in favor? Five oh, Ms. Becky. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I do have um, two other amendments to the agenda. Um, one is, um, we're going to add a four point one two, which will be um, leaps sites license approval. And then we will add four point one three, this onto the consent agenda, which is the SIG three. Okay. Are there any public comments at this time? Mr. Brad, is there that sheet there by you?
Ms. Williamson, are we going pledge?
Oh, I'm sorry. We've done so much. Wait once. I am so sorry. We've moved along so that we've not had our opening prayer or, and our pledge allegiance. Mr. Rick, I am so sorry. We got excited about that $20,000.
Don't blame you there. So Lord, we thank you for this opportunity to come and discuss the matters of this world. Uh, Lord, we pray that you would be with us during this meeting. We pray that um, everything that would be done would be done in accordance to your will for the children and the youth of this county and this community. Lord, we thank you for all of your blessings that you bestowed upon us. We send your praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge my allegiance to the United States of America and to the law of the complete justice. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Full of financial, which items? Which item Karen? Okay. Okay. I'll do that when we get to the, that, um, okay. Um, Ms. Langston?
My name is Cynthia Dell Langston and I'm a concerned citizen of Madison County. And I just wanted to come here to uh, express my disappointment when I read this in the paper. This is the time in Madison County in the past few years where our schools have been so damaged. They have struggled to get their grade level up to a C level so the state can take them over. It's a very challenging time for our students and our teachers. What a disappointment to read this in the paper because what example does this set for our teachers and our students? We may see something like this.
Ma'am, I have no comment. So speak all you want. I have no comment.
And we can remind her, Madam Chair, she has so many minutes to speak.
Yes, ma'am. Just three minutes.
I have the right.
You do.
To express my disappointment in you because our children.
And what did you say your name?
My name is Cynthia Dell Langston. I wrote it down. Our children deserve better than this. Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay, um. Ms. Uh, Mr. Donnell Davis?
My name's Donnell Davis. I'm a concerned citizen as well. Um, it still continues to be an editor of the same Madison County football. Everything go towards sports in this county. We have education that's very important to me, but I guess it's likened to everyone else. Boost just projected to raise more money for the field house for the football team. We had three, four guys that had scholarships this year, four, five, because of education they weren't able to go to. We can cheer on Friday nights for these kids, but they can't run your town on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. So there's something wrong with that. But we always could find a way to raise money for football. And ninety percent of the people, if you take inventory, who go to the football games, just like you said, if African Americans, and so this Mounds is a free thing. Every get, everyone get free food, right? We get free food and Friday night, we want to raise five more dollars to get in a football game. We got teachers that need money, extra money, salary to keep them. So we continue to grow. But we always maneuver around for sports. And you know, everywhere I went across the country, you know, I knew Mounds County. Two reasons. You know Mounds County. Football and police hits. Because everybody got stopped for a ticket. All they know about Mounds County Cowboys. When are we going to change this philosophy? True enough, people made five on schools. It's about political things. It's not about the kids. It's just polit- it's just political front about all the kids. Was this the first year kids made five on the test? This the only time they ever got recognized? We had the governor. It's all about political. So don't make our kids look like fools right here for political games. It's time to stop playing games. And the kids see this. We all see this. It's all about games. I'm, I'm curious to know, was this the first time in Mounds County history that kids made five on this test?
No, sir.
No, sir. So I, I don't, I didn't understand why all these letters at the war ceremony, we giving out, we giving out, um, uh, some money, you know, wars, things like that. It never happened. It's like it's a political thing. I know Bill McGodren for against Senator, tenor senator now. So that was a big point, you know? We, we need to do better. And, and to see that y'all just took, and, and it should have been a community environment with this five dollar thing, just not certain people because the boost is going to take care of the whole football program. It's a lot of people go support this program. It's a lot of low income people that try their best to get to these games that struggling to go support these Cowboys to come. And how many, I, I was looking at that list, how many people off that list you said charged to go to their games out of the county?
Columbia.
Columbia. Out of all, and everyone less their rank high than us economy wise, right? So how come we feel that we need to raise that? And we got money in the board that could help make this, we just, how much money y'all spent for the school not too long ago? To remodulate the school? How much was that spent on the school? Why wasn't that added in the budget for doing the field house and all that stuff? Instead of trying to drain the people in this county to increase the sports. Instead of education, pay the, pay the teachers more so we can have productive teachers. So we don't get the last pile of teachers every year trying to come to Mounds because the paper, you know, even to the, the thing like she just said in the newspaper about her. But one thing about it, when you read that newspaper, you don't get all the real facts. So have a mind of your own sometimes because hey, I'm in the newspaper as well. I've been a Republican. I've never been a Republican. Because you can't believe everything, you can't believe everything you see. So that newspaper is not truthful all the time. So you get snippets and bits. But I just challenge y'all. As y'all been, you know, we proved our grades this year, but as for the future, let's not make Mounds County all about football. I, I, I'll tell you, it inspires me. It, I, it doesn't excite me because that's all it is. And when football over, these guys don't rent Friday night, they don't have nothing else to look to. So you guys do better. Stop letting people just will or lean because of football. Because after football, look at the Hussein kids we talking about? I seen three on the news, inferno page, Cowboys football stars got arrested for this, got arrested for that, got arrested for that. And at the end of the day, that's all it was, a star on Friday night.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Davis. We'll move on to uh, the consent items. Are there any questions about any of the things that's on the consent agenda?
I've got a question about four point seven, approval of solid waste disposal service to the $264,080. Is that, are there any other options or is that, that's what we have to pay? That's what we have to pay. Now that's being paid to the.
To the county.
To the county.
Well, wait a minute. You, you, you have to dispose of the solid waste now.
Oh, yeah. Well, I know that.
You don't have to engage the county. If you can find a private entity willing to do it for less, you can engage that private entity. But I think, I don't think they're, I don't, I don't think we're ever successful in doing that.
Though they've tried to do that.
Yeah, but you can't get somebody.
We've never, never, ever been able to find a private company who would go lower than the county. And then that money should be kept in the county anyway. The county, you know, we need to take care of our own county.
Well, right. It's just that I was questioning the, the amount. It just seems exorbitant to me, but I don't know the price of garbage collection. So it's.
I think that's the same price you would pay as a private entity. It's, it's paid on the per pull, which means they, they put you out of big dumpster. And they come get it, it's full of trash. They charge a certain amount of double.
Well, now, okay, thank you.
But the, uh, the, the county can require every entity in the county to show that they have a way to dispose of their solid waste.
They can't compel you to use the county services. But usually there's not a, another good option. Okay. Well, thank you for that information.
Okay. Any other questions about any item? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make the motion to approve the consent items.
Is there a second?
Second.
Reggie, uh, Mr. Daniels. Alright, all those in favor? Five oh. Okay. We were going to um, five point one, the uh, stat, stat, we're going to pull on the um, agenda, line item agenda, the um, five point seven, the monthly financial report. We're pulling that, is that?
Yes, they won't have the year end closeout done till Friday.
Okay.
So he won't have the final one till then.
Alright. Five point one staffing trips?
There are none. There are none under our categoricals and grants.
Okay. Five point two student field trips out of county.
There are three field trips. So I do ask for approval of the three student trips under there.
I make the, I make the motion to approve the student field trips out of county.
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Mr. Alfred, seconded by Ms. Hagan to approve the out of districts, uh, student field trips. All those in favor? Five oh, Ms. Becky. Screen school volunteers, Mr. Starnaker? Okay, are there, is there any questions?
I make the motion to approve the two screen volunteers.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Daniels, seconded by Ms. Gibson. All those in favor? Five oh, Ms. Becky. Personnel changes? Mr. Starnaker?
Any facts of personnel changes just for me?
Are there any questions about personnel changes?
Madam Chair, I move for approval of personnel changes.
Okay. Um, motion made by Ms. Hagan for personnel changes, uh, second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Gibson. All those in favor? Excuse me, five oh, Ms. Becky. Okay, um, staffing table changes, Mr. Starnaker?
Madam Chairman, also on in board docs as well at your stations, I provided printing copies at your station just for your.
Thank you because it's bigger print.
To be able to see them a little bit better. But they're also on board docs. Uh, we'd, we'd like to address the two page one first. It's a two page eight and a half by eleven. You look on the second page, it has red and green. Actually, you see my comments and the changes of what was changed. Uh, at Greenville, we cut them one position from non-instructional. Uh, we actually moved that nurse to the district asset. And the reason why, we needed a full-time nurse that can be dedicated to Greenville covered by the health department. So this particular nurse is at the district office on their staffing table, which I have placed at the bottom. But she's actually assigned to work at the high school. Then at Central School, we added one CDA for a 3K position. But we cut three paraprofessionals that were paid out of SIG. And then at the high school, we cut one paraposition. Now, the numbers in the last column are 100% correct. Everything to the left of that last column, Walter and I are still working on making changes such as those that are paid out of grants, those are paid out of general funds. We're trying to get as many people paid out of, uh, grants as possible to increase the, uh, general fund now.
Um, my question about that position that was cut from Greenville and that nurse position. And you're saying that the Madison County Health Department is furnishing a full-time.
They provide four nurses for the school district.
Okay.
We provide one.
Okay. So Greenville will have that nurse?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Then on the long sheet, this is the instructional staffing table. Uh, looking at the high school, they were cut, uh, three quarters, actually over on the right-hand side, the current staff right now is 34.75. We cut one, added one back and they wound up losing point seven five teachers. The central school, if you remember correctly, I came back to you about adding a guidance counselor, adding, um, a dean of students. But the highlights in, in the center column, uh, bottom line, they were cut two point two five staff from last year to this year. And uh, we did add back those positions that you allowed me to add back earlier. Then Pineetta, due to student size and, and student growth, we did have to add them one teacher and we paid that out of class size reduction. Any of your questions?
Are there any questions for Mr. Starnaker?
No, thank you for the information.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there a motion to approve the staffing table changes?
I make a motion to approve the staffing changes.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Okay, motion made to approve the staffing table changes made by Ms. Gibson, seconded by Mr. Alfred. All in for favor? Five oh, Ms. Becky. Okay, the five point six, sir. Mr. Walter, okay. Five point six, um, possible inclusion of charter schools in the district insurance plan.
How are y'all doing?
Good.
Alright.
Um, let me, let us give y'all a document here. And please note, I don't expect at all the fatal this tonight because I'm just getting this to you. There was a lot of moving parts to this that we needed to clarify before putting this together.
Thank you.
And we will load this up to the full docs also. As we go through the renewal process on our health insurance, um, last year, and we called this a little late, um, some folks had come to us and we had worked with our agent, uh, Robin Riley and our agency, Brown and Brown, and determined that the two charters that operate under the district were eligible to participate in our health insurance plans. And um, in the analysis of the cost benefits of allowing them to do that, um, I'm not going to go through all the details. Y'all can go through this offline. But the, the plan that, uh, the Creative Arts Academy has as a standalone plan is significantly higher for their premiums. And of course, that's an additional expense to the school and they have to pass it along to the employees that participate also. So we had laid out on page two of the document I gave you, just a comparison of the cost with the renewal coming up that Creative Arts Academy has under their standalone plan versus what our renewal rates, if they are, if they participated in the uh, district plan. You, you can see that the increase in premiums are anywhere from $69 for an individual employee to 250 for a family plan. Also, if you look at the details of the insurance plan that, that they have, uh, the parameters of the plan being the, um, the deductibles, coinsurance, things like that are not as favorable. I know Ms. Hagan's on the. I know Ms. Hagan's on the insurance committee, if I missed anybody else. We did meet on June the 5th and agree to investigate this, not to make a decision. And I just think it's, whichever route the board decides to go, I think we do need to address it and at least consider it. And I just quickly wrote down some things here. We would not, of course, want to do this if there's any chance it would cause an increase in our district rates. We would want to have an interlocal agreement if we did this that would allow us to drop them on a year-by-year basis, should we determine that it's more favorable for us to move forward without them included in our plan. And when I say them, James Madison, my understanding, they currently do not offer a group health plan, so this would help them get on board. I just, again, I just think it's something we need to chew on and digest, and if it's a win-win for everybody and doesn't cost us anything more, it may be something we consider.
I would be in favor of anything that would get the rates down, because as a teacher, we paid, we paid big, big bucks for what we had. Now, I'd be happy to have them join us if it could keep it the way it is or keep the rates down, get the rates down.
Well-
Because they're paying so much.
And I will have to say this, my wife teaches at, she, at the Creative Arts Academy, she taught in the district for almost 10 years, so I, but I would be doing this exact same thing, that's not even a variable, it's just the right thing.
But the probability, if, the more people you have in the long run, it could increase your opportunities to have more options of what we could get, couldn't it?
Well, in my history of dealing with health insurance renewals, it's almost always the case, if you have a bigger pool-
Right.
-you have a lower rate. I've had people ask the fair question about, well, how are their loss runs going to affect our rates? Well, this year they won't affect it. These rates are fixed if they come on board. We can't answer that question. They have a plan that's under 50 people right now, so you don't have detailed loss runs. But our agent has assured us, come to renewal time next year, we will be able to break it out with and without the charters. They will have specific loss run information. So, again, I think if it's a win-win, we need to consider it. I don't want to spend one more dime out of our district here on anything.
And you're saying they would, they would pay their premium and it would not cost us anything, it would be?
It would not, they would be-
They would pay the district or-
They'd pay their own, they'd just get a better rate because sweet, they can add to our, they add with our number and get a better rate.
At that last-
Because they're so small.
At that last insurance committee meeting, we discussed all these options, and the agent was here, as Ms. Copeland said, and we had a set rate and a better insurance plan this year. We didn't have any up in costs, and we were discussing the more, the better, and there's that possibility, so the committee, it was spoken in the committee that it should be presented before the board. And he has given us some input, and I'm sure he'd have more next time, but the insurance committee did say-
Is there some kind of deadline that you would need to-
...before the board?
We would definitely need to vote on it-
Exactly.
-by the 17th meeting.
Here's the thing, as outlined in this plan, it would be a year-to-year contract, and if our costs overrun because of some of those instead of our employees, we can drop it. But, and I hadn't heard anybody in the beginning, I did some investigations and had questions and whatever, and I hadn't heard anybody tell me anything different. So it's what the board decides.
I mean, I think we should proceed with it. I mean, I think it's something that-
And I talked to Mr. Reeves briefly before the meeting, and, you know, we would draft an interlocal agreement that would specifically allow us year by year to address it, and you can terminate the relationship should it be something that costs us more money.
So do we need to vote on what meeting you said?
We can't vote on it tonight.
No, he said this by the September the-
Well, yeah, the sixth.
I think, Madam Chairman, if I may, I think probably if you all are interested in proceeding to take it to a vote, probably the next step would be, and I think rather than interlocal, it would probably be a charter amendment.
Right.
Is that, go ahead, let me draft the charter amendment, we'll have that for y'all to vote on at your next meeting, and then y'all can take action at that time, because you know, you just got getting all these things, you got to digest them, all that, but we can go ahead and prepare that. And I'm thinking like a little, just a one-page thing, and the way I would envision it would work is that every year, we would get numbers for just the district folks, what would those premiums be, and then the numbers for the entire group, and then you all could make a decision as to whether or not you want it to keep going. It may be that, you know, the premiums were higher one way or the other, you know, you just have to look at that on a year-by-year basis. And then I think we've got to build in some timeframes where you notify the charter schools well enough in advance, that if the board did want to not include them, they would have time to go get their own insurance and do what they needed to do.
Mr. Reeves, do we need to vote on, for you to do the charter amendment?
If I can sense it, y'all can direct me to draft it. I can, if y'all look at, that's-
I think that we, that the attorney should draft a charter amendment.
I do too. Anybody else?
And that'd be one each, so one for each school.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Reeves.
If any of y'all have further questions in the interim, reach out to me directly and I'll help.
And we'll vote on the September the 6th meeting?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Copeland.
Thank you for checking this out.
Again, I would've had this to you sooner, but we just got the renewal rates, and then we were trying to nail down the fact that we could do this on a year-by-year basis, so we could do it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Copeland.
Thank you.
And so to do that, I think it's September 4th meeting, to do that, we're gonna have to set that as a special meeting. Remember, because that's our workshop.
Right.
So we'll have to set it as a special meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Superintendent Adams?
Very calm first week. No major incidents or anything. We did start our welding classes last week, and then we met with the college today, and so far, it looks like they have about 10 in the pipeline, maybe a few more with their interest, so the new instructor, because their classes did not start until last Wednesday. So all the new equipment, you know, at our last meeting, I had to have you amend the agenda and add that purchase order for all the additional welders. Those, I think we're waiting on two more, the two TIG welders to come in. So the other welders are there, and their building is there for the college, the two shelters have, I think, are expected to be delivered tomorrow. So the college is very pleased with everything that we have done.
Okay, and we had thirty, we have 36 in the program?
I think we're trying to shuffle some numbers around still.
Add some more.
There were four students that have moved into the dual enrollment in the evening, so.
Yes.
Moved another one, so we're fine now. So because we're trying to keep our day numbers to 15.
Okay.
Per their request.
Okay.
So, so there's a lot of interest for that, but the college is very pleased. I did attend the PACE, the first meeting of the PACE consortium last week, and went over a lot of legislative stuff that's coming up. And I drove all the way to Gracerville to Baptist College, and very pleasant drive coming back, but lots of interesting things coming up this upcoming year, so we'll see what happens.
All righty. Anything else?
That's it so far.
Okay. Any Attorney Adams?
No ma'am, not unless you have questions.
Anybody have any questions to Mr. Reeves? Okay. Board Member Adams, Mr. Alfred?
I just want to welcome back all the students, faculty, and staff to the school year. I hope it's been a great year. Dr. Pickles really hasn't called with anything earth-shattering, so I assume it has been a good start. I want to recognize a little student, a little first grader. I received a thank you note in the mail from Bailey Bass, a first grade student at Lee. She was at Lee last year, and a real nice thank you note she sent me, and her parents are Kevin and Brenda Bass, and just want to commend them on having a first grader write a thank you note. That's something you really don't see these days, and again, I commend the parents, because you are teaching a lifelong skill there, and a very, very nice note.
And she'll be doing it in cursive.
Yeah.
Ms. Hagan?
No, thank you.
Mr. Daniels?
Guess I'll be remiss if I didn't thank, again, Duke Energy for that $20,000 contribution. Also, I wanted to, she's not here tonight, she's usually here, Ms. Tommy Bodenstein. She did some painting at the Central School leading up to the first day of school, and the staff really, really appreciated her contribution. She did a lot of little detailed paintings and doors and just small little contributions and everything, so I wanted to just commend her for her efforts. And also, I thank Mr. Dixon also helped out as well, did some, so.
I feel very confident about school opening up. I was able to attend 10 open houses, yes, 10, between Tuesday and Friday. Some of the schools had two different open houses, so it was strategically planned, but we, I got there. And I, today I visited Pineetta and Central. I went into 11 different classes and taught little mini lessons, and it was all about voting. We're trying to get the kids to get their parents to take, to vote, and actually, when they get to the voting booths, there will be a spot where children can vote. So if you have children or grandchildren, I suggest taking them to the polls, because let them vote too. Maybe they'll become lifelong voters.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. I want to thank everybody that's made this school year start off very smooth in keeping the children safe and getting everything in place, and we appreciate you and glad to have you all back. Okay, that's all. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I make the motion to adjourn, Madam Chairman.
A second?
Second.
A second. Ms. Becky, can you adjourn?